Hafedé, good afternoon, everyone. This virtual public hearing is reconvened by the Committee on Economic Development, Agriculture, Power and Energy Utilities and the Arts. It's now 2:04 PM. Notice that the hearing was disseminated to all local media outlets on March 24, 2021, with the second notice provided on March 29 of 2021. Notice for the hearing was also made known on the Guam Legislature's website. This afternoon, the committee will hear testimony on Resolution Number 46-36 LS relative to urging the National Marine Fisheries Service to delay the proposed coral critical habitat designation process until such time that the five-year Coral Status Review and Coral Recovery Plan can be completed, as well as urging the Department of Agriculture to work in coordination with the NMFS to identify appropriate coral critical habitat for Guam using the best scientific information available. This resolution was introduced by myself at the request of the Department of Agriculture and after having discussions with the Department of Agriculture. Before we proceed with hearing testimonies, allow me to provide the panel participants with some general rules of conduct for this virtual public hearing. All participants must abide by the rules of conduct and quality assurance standards, including the chair will invite individuals who have signed up to testify. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking and shall state their name, title and organization for record purposes. Please ensure that you are unmuted and that you are speaking clearly into your microphone. For group settings where more than one individual is present, please state your name before providing comments. From among the panel senators, each member will be allowed to pose one question to an individual testifying for one round and be provided another round if necessary. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character or motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any violations of this rule of conduct will result in removal from the meeting room by the host. I'd like to welcome first my colleagues who are joining me this afternoon, Senator Tony Ada and Senator Sabina Perez. Thank you for joining us. And I would like to begin with my opening statement on Resolution 46-36 LS. This resolution aligns our body with our fellow territories throughout the Pacific and ensuring that we have the best scientific information available to address our critical coral habitats locally. By asking for a pause on the critical coral habitat designation, we're allowing the scientists to continue doing the work that they do to learn more about our reefs and ensure that every decision made is tailored to our unique circumstances locally. I thank our Magahaga for her work alongside the governors of the CNMI and American Samoa that they have done in an effort to extend the public commenting period for the designation. The purpose of this is to allow the people living on the island to provide the important context and perspective needed on these types of federal designations. These local comments, when combined with scientific data, are the best way to make these types of designations. And this is why I introduce this resolution in partnership with the Department of Agriculture. And I thank them for bringing this issue to my attention. We have to recognize that while this designation does attempt to protect our ocean resources, the critical habitat does not include much of the marine areas within military jurisdiction, including the surface danger zones off of Vertidian Point. By introducing this resolution and pausing this designation, we can ensure that more people are able to raise concerns and highlight the importance of protecting the natural resources of our entire island. It is not the intention to stop efforts to protect our important ocean resources. Rather, we want more information. We want more information from the local community and public comment from our local stakeholders and community activists who ensure the protection of our environment. We also want this designation to happen after the five-year Coral Status Review and Recovery Plan has been completed so that we can have the research and data that supports these designations. By having this testimony, we can ensure that these designations are informed and everyone who should have a say has a say in protecting our important coral reefs. Now, while there is always room for improvement, our local government has already done a lot to protect our reefs and the reef ecosystem by creating things like our marine preserves, banning scuba spearfishing and other conservation methods, excuse me, measures. We don't think it's fair for a federal agency to unilaterally designate the entire coastline of Guam, except for military coastline, as critical habitat without adequate input from our local regulatory agencies, input from the public and input from the five-year Coral Status Review and Recovery Plan. With that, I'd like to now invite members of the panel to provide testimony. I will go in order as how they signed in. So we'll begin first with the Director of the Department of Agriculture, Chelsa Munia-Brecht. You're recognized.
Hafedé, thank you, Senator Rajal, Senator Ada and Senator Perez and the committee. I would like to echo the sentiments conveyed by Senator Rajal in saying that I agree with everything you've said. We have an eight-page statement that I will submit but not read into record to spare all of you the eight pages of it. But I would also like to provide a few updates. As of our most recent conversation with NIMPs, NOAA National Marine Fisheries Services, they have agreed to extend the deadline for our comments, but only by 60 days. Whereas we were asking for the completion of the review, they've granted us until May 26 to complete, and this is for each of the territories, to complete working on or developing our maps that we want to offer to them to counter the maps that they've provided, which, as you said, highlight and outline the surrounding areas around the entire island of Guam with the exception of DOD property. And this is from zero to 40 meters. So that is from the shore to about 100 and is it Julian, I believe it's 141 feet roughly? I'm sorry, I apologize. Didn't mean to put you on the spot there. And it counters their, the qualifications that they have listed for critical habitat, which are hard substrate areas and non-disturbed areas with clean water running through it. So we're working to develop maps that identify areas in Guam shores or near shores that are not hard substrate and include most of our bays, such as Tumon Bay and Talafoco Bay, Pago Bay, and areas that are disturbed and do not have the clean water that they were designating, like areas with sewer outfalls, areas with runoff that are, that have frequent and habitual runoff. So we are still working with the Western Pacific Fisheries Council to provide additional requests to NIMPs to still consider extending until their review is done, the Coral Status Review, which this resolution will go far in supporting. And as Senator Rajal stated, the CNMI and American Samoa legislatures will be proffering the same resolution. And if it comes to, and we've spoken with Governor Leon Guerrero about this, and CNMI and America and Samoa have done the same, then we will work with our leadership to draft a letter to the Secretary of Commerce and Secretary of Interior as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Chelsa, for your testimony. Julian Jansen, Guam Coastal Zone Management Program.
I'm Julian Jansen, Federal Consistency Coordinator of the Guam Coastal Management Program, also known as GCMP at the Bureau of Statistics and Plans. Hafedé Senators of 36 Guam Legislature and members of the general public. GCMP's Administrator Edwin Rages had asked that I provide testimony with respect to the resolution. GCMP does not take a position on this resolution, but I am testified in order to provide background information with respect to the recent federal consistency review of the proposed critical habitat designation for a Globuseps, a Ratusa and S. aculiata. The National Marine Fisheries Service published its proposed rule in November 2020, but only provided the Guam Coastal Management Program with its consistency determination toward the end of January 2021. GCMP provided public notice through its consistency notice and publication on the BSP website and provided a month for comments for agencies and individuals. GCMP is a networked agency which works with a number of local agencies to provide its responses for federal consistency cases, namely Department of Agriculture, Department of Public Works, Department of Parks and Recreation, Department of Land Management, the Guam Environmental Protection Agency and the Guam Waterworks Authority. Federal consistency is a process where federal actions are assured to be conducted consistently with duly adopted enforceable policies on Guam relating to resource uses and environmental protection. Our local federal consistency is guided by program policies which are adopted pursuant to Guam Executive Order 7837. Now, the Guam Coastal Management Program objected to the proposed critical habitat designation on the basis primarily of the governmental processes policy, which states more effective administration of natural resources-related laws, programs and policies shall be achieved through revision of unclear and outdated laws and regulations, improved coordination among local agencies, improved coordination between territorial and federal agencies and educational and training programs for local government personnel and refinement of supporting technical data. Now, coordinate, improved coordination between territorial and federal agencies is actually referring to the federal consistency process in general. But, you know, so we basically felt that the, or we interpreted this policy as requiring that, basically, we had to have effective administration of natural resource-related laws, programs, policies. And there were a number of problems with the information that was being provided from the National Marine Fisheries Service to back up their proposed action, the coral or the critical habitat designation. I mean, we reviewed our input from the networked agencies, including Department of Agriculture, Guam Waterworks, and also Parks and Recreation also provided something. In brief, and the first basis for the objection was that we found that inadequate scientific evidence confirming the presence of the corals had been presented to provide effective administration of natural resources through the designation, and therefore it's not consistent. Also, that inadequate scientific basis was provided to ascertain the range of the species covered under the proposed critical habitat. Also, that the latest and highest quality scientific evidence was not used in the delineation of the proposed critical habitat boundary, both in terms of substrate and water quality data, meeting the defined essential features for the proposed critical habitat, and therefore we objected. Now, I mean, that's what she was referring to, the 40-meter contour basically around Guam with exceptions, basically for federal underwater lands and a few exceptions as well for things like the Agania Boat Base and, anyway, some other areas like that. And then we also had a further basis of objection because, oh, see, this is what I said, that delineating critical habitat based primarily on depth contours is an inadequate and ineffective method to establish that the area is to serve as critical habitat to allow for recoveries of the corals. And as Chelsa was mentioning, they're trying to now help rectify that by providing a proper map which takes into account the water conditions and the condition of the substrate in the areas around Guam. So that's really all that I have to say, and I'm here in case anybody has any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Julian, for your testimony. I do have, before we go on to open it up to the panel for questions, I do have testimony I'd like to read into the record, written testimony that was provided by David Burdick, Research Associate, University of Guam Marine Laboratory. All right, so I'll go ahead and read this into the record. This is a testimony in support of Resolution 46-36, provided by David Burdick, Research Associate, University of Guam Marine Laboratory. In the beginning, it starts out, and I'll just read it directly. Conflict of Interest Statement. Before I present my written testimony, I would like to make it known that 51% of my salary and benefits as a research associate at the University of Guam Marine Laboratory is funded via the Bureau of Statistics and Plans by the National Marine Fisheries and Fisheries Administration's Coral Reef Conservation Program through its jurisdictional grant. Also, while employed with the Guam Bureau of Statistics and Plans, I provided scientific information to NMFS during the process to list several coral species as threatened under the Endangered Species Act. I also played a major role in the development of the letter from the Director of the Bureau of Statistics and Plans, in which we laid out our concerns regarding the use of the ESA as a coral conservation tool. A copy of this letter and the scientific information provided to NMFS can be provided upon request. The testimony I am providing on this resolution is not influenced by funding source, by past or present local government agency positions regarding the ESA-listed corals or NMFS or local government agency personnel with whom I occasionally collaborate, and is instead representative of my current thinking on this somewhat complicated matter. As the process moves forward to designate critical habitat for the ESA-listed coral species in the waters around Guam and other U.S. jurisdictions, I would like to take the opportunity to express my support for Resolution Number 46-36 LS and urge the National Marine Fisheries Service to delay the designation of critical habitat until after the five-year Status Review and Coral Recovery Plan can be completed. I would also like to urge NMFS to consider removing one of the listed coral species, Acropora ratusa, from the list of species believed to occur in Guam's waters pending further confirmation of its presence here. In addition, if critical habitat is to be designated, I would also urge that NMFS consider implementing internal guidelines that limit regulatory requirements for Seria topora aculiata to the same depth range as Acropora globuseps in order to reduce risk to divers who may be tasked to survey at depths of up to 40 meters, as well as guidelines that would minimize, guidelines that would minimize the regulatory burden on those agencies and organizations carrying out projects aimed at coral reef management, monitoring and restoration. As I alluded in the Conflict of Interest Statement, information I provided to NMFS at various stages throughout the listing process played an important role in the agency's determination of whether or not a given species occurred in the waters around Guam. This information, although primarily qualitative in nature, also contributed to the body of knowledge regarding the status of the populations of these species. In recent weeks, I have provided some updated information to the Guam Department of Agriculture regarding the Endangered Species Act listed species that have been determined by the NOAA Office of Protected Resources to occur in Guam's waters, as well as reiterated some concerns I have regarding the taxonomic uncertainty of these species and provided some recommended courses of action in light of these uncertainties. Below is a summary of the information I relayed to the Department of Agriculture, followed by an explanation of some of the concerns I have regarding the designation of critical habitat and some recommended courses of action, including those called for by this resolution. Since I provided my comments, both as an employee of the Guam Bureau of Statistics and Plans and as a private citizen in 2012 and 2013, I have carried out several hundred dives at locations around the island. I made a specific effort to return to the single site, Factbe Point, where I observed two Seria topora aculiata colonies, one in September 2008, one in December 2010, as well as to Asgad Al Bay in the Acheang Reef Flat Marine Preserve, where a single colony, believed similar to Acropora ratusa, was observed in August of 2011. During the return visit to the Factbe Site, which occurred in December of 2016, no S. aculiata colonies could be located in the area where the two were previously observed. Skeletons could not be located, so their mortality cannot be confirmed, but it is highly likely that both colonies are dead. I returned to Asgad Al Bay several times since I photographed a colony similar to a Ratusa in 2011, but did not observe any living colonies in the area where one colony had been observed. In July of 2019, I shared with my colleague, Dr. Doug Fenner, an image of another colony that resembled a Ratusa that I observed in West Agania Bay on the western coast of Guam in 2012. This colony, which has only been recently identified by Dr. Fenner and myself as possibly being a Ratusa, is presumed dead as neither that specific colony nor any other living a Ratusa colonies were observed during a visit to the site in 2018. Nearly all shallow Acropora at that site were killed across multiple bleaching events between 2013 and 2017. I have not observed either S. aculata or a Ratusa at any location around Guam since the sightings of S. aculiata in 2008 and 2010, and the sightings of a Ratusa in 2011 and 2012, including any of the several long-term monitoring sites on Guam that are visited on a regular basis, and each of which occupy areas of reef ranging from 0.1 to 0.2 kilometers. Any more, any of the more than 40 southern Marianas survey sites I visited in 2009 and 2011, the more than 80 survey sites I visited between Saipan and Iroquois in 2017, or the numerous dives I've carried out at bleaching survey sites around Guam are sites visited while diving recreationally or for consulting work on Guam, Rodatini and Saipan. The Mariana Islands coral species currently considered to be a Globuseps by NOAA, OPR, which is more commonly encountered than either the S. aculiata or a Ratusa in Guam's waters, also appear to have suffered a population decline as a result of recent bleaching events. Colonies can still be occasionally encountered around the island, but this species can now be considered uncommon, too rare, in Guam's waters. Two data sets produced by the Guam Long-Term Coral Reef Monitoring Program in 2020, through a detailed analysis of hundreds of Bentec photo transect images obtained at multiple sites around Guam during the 2013 and 2017 bleaching events, provide the most current quantitative data regarding the status of the Mariana Islands coral species currently considered to be a Globuseps, declined by approximately 50% between 2013 and 2017, likely as a result of impacts related to coral bleaching events. It should be noted that more than three years have passed since the end of the 2017 event without moderate or severe bleaching observed on Guam's reefs, while no post-2017 data are currently available to determine if this period of relatively favorable environmental conditions allowed for small improvements in the population status. It seems likely that some gains have occurred over the last few years. While it's clear that Guam populations of species that NOAA OPR currently considers to be Seria topora, aculiata, Acropora ratusa and a Globuseps are not faring well in response to the combined threat of local and global scale stressors, what is not clear is if these species are indeed Quelches S. aculiata and Dana's a Ratusa and a Globuseps. It's not clear if the Mariana species align with the concept of these species used by others who generate data relied upon to assess extinction risks and to determine the need to designate critical habitat. There is a great deal of uncertainty regarding the taxonomy of numerous coral groups, especially the Acroporids. I understand that NMFS must use the best available data, but I think the unusually high degree of uncertainty regarding the taxonomy of some of these species and the resulting uncertainty pertaining to the status of their populations should at least give pause to proceeding further with the regulation of these species by designating critical habitat. I think a pause is particularly needed with regards to the listed Acropora species, as this group is likely to undergo substantial revision over the next few years as a result of a multi-partner collaboration that aims to integrate molecular and morphological data to resolve species boundaries in this group. A University of Guam Marine Laboratory colleague and I are part of this collaboration and have provided DNA extractions for 48 samples representing 35 Acropora species from Guam's waters. The Guam samples have not yet been sequenced and integrated into an Indo-Pacific-wide Acropora phylogeny, but it is hoped that this can be completed by the end of this year. However, even with the results of that ongoing study still pending, the uncertainty already expressed in my previous comments to NMFS regarding the assertion that Dana's a Ratusa occurs in the Marianas, combined with the lack of any sightings of anything resembling that species in recent years, leads me to recommend that this species be removed from the list of ESA-protected species believed to occur in Guam's waters. While I think it is more likely the Mariana's a Globuseps is the same as Dana's a Globuseps than his a Ratusa, there's still an uncomfortable degree of uncertainty regarding the use of this name for the Mariana species. Similarly, the interesting and at times confusing results of the two studies that utilize genetics to resolve species boundaries among some Seria topora species also lead me to believe that the validity, excuse me, the validity of the S. aculiata may not be as solid as I once had thought. As a result of both the taxonomic uncertainty, as well as the extreme rarity of what is currently recognized as S. aculiata within the least recreational diving depths, I recommend that either critical habitat not be designated at all for this species in Guam's waters, or that the depth range be limited to coincide with that of a Globuseps. I believe the agencies and entities that receive federal funds address the presence of the species within a planned project area at depths greater than that of a Globuseps would increase the risk of dive-related injuries to agency biologists or contractors, would increase the logistical complexity and the cost of survey efforts, and is arguably unnecessary, given the extremely low probability that the species would occur in the project area across the 0 to 40-meter depth range. In closing, I again want to emphasize that I do understand that NMFS must follow a legally mandated process and must use the best available data to inform this process. However, given the taxonomic uncertainty surrounding the species discussed in this letter and other issues I have raised, I urge NMFS to consider removing Acropora ratusa from the list of ESA-protected species occurring in Guam's waters. I also urge NMFS to consider delaying the designation of critical habitat for Acropora Globuseps and Seria topora aculiata at least until the Status Review and Recovery Plan are completed. If the agency proceeds to designate critical habitat for these species, I would ask NMFS to limit the designation of critical habitat for S. aculiata to coincide with the known depth range of a Globuseps and to not require that federally-funded entities to assess the presence of these corals at the depths of 40 meters. If critical habitat for S. aculi must extend to 40 meters, perhaps clear guidance could be provided to compliance officers to allow for the flexibility to not require presence-absence data to a depth of 40 meters. Along those same lines, I hope that the designation of critical habitat for any of these species in Guam's waters proceeds, NMFS can provide guidance to compliance officers that will ensure that, that share their habitat and those projects aimed at reducing local stressors to Guam's reef resources not be hindered by placing additional regulatory burden on already capacity-strapped agencies and other organizations. Instead, I urge NMFS to formalize internal protocols that focus compliance efforts on projects that clearly pose a significant risk to these species and their critical habitat, including major national projects that would result in additional greenhouse gas emissions, which pose the gravest threat to the survival of these poorly understood species. Finally, I also want to support this resolution's call for NMFS to collaborate directly with the Department of Agriculture regarding the designation of specific areas of critical habitat and possibly excluding areas of unconsolidated sediment, seagrass and mangroves. I would also add that I, in my capacity as the principal investigator of Guam's Long-Term Coral Reef Monitoring Program, am also willing to provide any information I have that may aid in the process. All right, that is some very lengthy written testimony that I wanted to read into the record because David Burdick only submitted written testimony and was not able to make it, make it here today in person or via Zoom. With that, I'd like to allow the opportunity for my colleagues now to ask questions of any of the panel members who are present today, beginning with Senator Tony Ada. beginning with Senator Tony Adah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have any questions at this time. I'll let my other colleagues go ahead and proceed.
Thank you, Senator Adah. Senator Perez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just a question for Director Breck. Regarding the letter that is, will be submitted for testimony, can you at least provide a little bit of a background, or at least maybe a general summary of?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
So, it might be, well, if you don't mind, if I may, I can tell you of our experience through this process thus far.
That sounds good.
Our findings. So, this came to us during a Western Fisheries Management, the Westpac meeting is the Western Regional Fisheries Management Council meeting. I believe it was our March meeting. No, I'm sorry, the December meeting. Made aware during a presentation that NOAA had published a proposed federal rule November 27th, which was the day after Thanksgiving. Everybody, for the most part, was on breaks or just in and out of their offices, and that the deadline for public comment was February 26th. They had no intention of holding a public hearing. During the council meeting, I was scouring the notes that were provided to us and reading the rules and found that during the, after they had proposed the rule, if requested, they are required to hold a public hearing. So I requested it verbally at that time, and then the council and CNMI submitted an official letter also requesting a public hearing. We had asked if they would consider having individual public hearings for each of the areas. Instead, what they proposed to do was have digital public hearings, and they offered two, one for Guam and CNMI, and one for American Samoa, instead of having public hearings within the region. They allowed time for, where they did brief presentations. We were allowed to ask questions and received answers, but at that time, they wouldn't be recording those for documentation. They would only accept what was submitted during public testimony. After the public hearings concluded, each of the territories requested from our governor to sign a joint letter requesting an extension for a comment. We submitted that letter, and we had it submitted before the public hearings. We asked on the record during the public hearing if it was received. They stated they did not know. And then, after the public hearings, staff were made aware of, first, this coral recovery training that's supposed to be taking place, I believe, in April or May, in May, I think. And then, we began working on maps jointly as a Critical Habitat Task Force Subcommittee with American Samoa, CNMI, and Guam. We decided to discuss what areas should be addressed. We thought water quality was a direct area to be addressed. The fact that the maps were very flawed, the fact that no state agencies were contacted or consulted before the issuing of this proposed rule, and the fact that we wanted to go deep in depth into the informational report that they were referencing throughout the published rule, the proposed rule. We gave our different teams that task. One of the things we discovered at AG during the in-depth dive into the report was that, as Mr. Burdick referenced in his letter, the only reference for Guam was personal communications from Mr. Burdick, and that he had also commented on that after that he submitted that, that it was, the identification was questionable because it was just a visual identification, and that even after he had gone back, he couldn't find those colonies again. Ms. Whitney, who is our coral coordinator, commented that there were severe bleaching events that happened after that event, so the survivability of those colonies is also questionable, that NOAA NIMs has not come out to conduct any recent surveys, to even update any of their information. So the fact that they're referencing the best available science is in itself flawed and questionable. Then, as the heads of agencies and with Westpac, we requested a meeting with Mr. Sam Rauch, who is the, I guess, the boss of the regional administrator, Mr. Michael Tisado. We laid out all of our points for him, the fact that both federal and state laws over governing ESA, which is the endangered species, and regulatory programs are so numerous that they already accomplished this task, that this would just be another layer of bureaucracy. During the public hearing, NIMs also, I asked directly, would you even receive any additional support to review any of the additional permitting that's required, and they said they would not. So, layer upon layer, this just seemed like a bad idea, a bad initial proposed rule, a bad process from the gate. And so we asked that they delay the issuing of the public rule until after the critical or the five-year review. In that, we also pointed out another error that his staff has made because they said that they published a draft of the five-year review and that they received no comment. We were able to point out that they never published the draft, that they published a notice that they were drafting, and that it was never made available for anyone to review, so they would not have received comment. And then, NIMs came back and said, okay, you're right, that was the case. So there's just really been no transparency through this process. And as Mr. Burdick reiterated, it's questionable if it was even the Acropora retusa that was found, and that he's conducting genetic analysis, and that that's one of the sciences that we could be waiting for, rather than rushing through with this decision to be made that would negatively impact not just all the federally-funded programs we have. They also, from their very first presentation, state that this will not impact fishing. Fishers will not be excluded from going fishing, but they fail to consider that the fags that we deploy and the shallow-water mooring devices are all anchored in hard substrate, and that would require an additional layer of review if the proposed rules are adopted. So then, it does have the potential to impact fishing on Guam, especially at the 0 to 40 meters, which is where a lot of the shallow-water mooring devices are located. Additionally, most of our projects are federally funded, which would be the federal nexus that's required just to trigger this. We also pointed out in our letter that private projects, including the building of individual homes, could be impacted. If it's on properties greater than one acre, that triggers another federal nexus review, let alone if you have multiple dwelling projects that would be developed and privately funded, there's another federal nexus trigger.
Okay. So with that, so as far as development is concerned, would that also include development on base in addition to the?
No.
So it does, it basically, it segregates or discriminates?
They reference the Sykes Act as the reasoning for being allowed to exclude the military bases. They say that the N-RAM that the base has covers their conservation efforts and that it's substantial enough to warrant them not be included, and that they weighed the national defense against this, against the impact of this proposed rule. Then that was the reasoning for deciding that military sections would be excluded. And this is also on CNMI, so there are entire segments of several of the islands that are just covered in purple, which is what I kept referencing for them because the military bases were outlined in red, including the surface danger zone, and then the rest of the island was covered in purple. And that's going to be the areas designated as critical habitat. Although Mr. Tisado tried to claim that within the purple, they would only pinpoint certain areas depending on whether those areas met the criteria. That is just his statement. That is not what's written. And even at that, it's questionable because they say one thing about only certain habitats, but their maps say another thing. So they're conflicting with themselves, and if it came down to it, we wouldn't know which way they would decide based on what's written versus what they're saying.
Okay, and so this critical habitat is being initiated by the federal government? Is that correct?
It's being initiated by NOAA NIMs, yes. There was a national nonprofit organization, I forget what they're called, but they sued NIMs for this critical habitat designation because by law, when a species is declared as endangered, then NIMs is supposed to come in within a year and declare critical habitat or designate critical habitat. I believe this was done more than five years ago, so that's why the lawsuit, and now the push to have it done, but in their push, they're rushing, and they just haven't done it properly.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was thinking, because normally, these critical habitats take a long time, right? It's not just a couple of months, right? Because we were given notice November 27th, November, and yeah, my understanding, it takes years to designate a critical habitat. Are there other coral reef habitats or critical habitats that have been established to kind of?
There has been. There's been Alaska, Florida, and the Virgin Islands, and we even posed the question to them, can they demonstrate that there's been a success with any of these critical habitats? And they don't even have that data. So basically, it's designated and kind of walk away, hoping it turns out. Another argument that we're posing to them is that these are species found all over the world, but because NIMs does not have the authority to designate all over the world, they're designating in basically what they consider United States-owned areas. However, the populations that are found in the United States waters are very insignificant when compared to the populations found worldwide. I have it in my notes somewhere. I don't exactly remember the number, but I know it's less than 10%.
Okay, yeah. So yeah, it'd be interesting to see because I think the process, right? It just seems, yeah, it wasn't done properly. And whether it was initiated by a nonprofit, do you know what the name of this nonprofit is?
I don't recall, I'm sorry. But it was a pretty major lawsuit. Yeah, I forgot what else I was going to say. Oh, that when the ESA was established and critical habitat, it was done when it was mainly considered for terrestrial areas. So this was, having to deal with coral was something they never conceived when they created this process. So all of this is relatively, I mean, not, in a sense, it's kind of new. It just wasn't what was conceived.
Right, because of land, you know, things are a little bit more defined, right? But when you're dealing with water, the contamination can spill over, right? It's, there's no barrier, so to speak, right? So, yeah, I don't know how they were able to establish a critical habitat for water. I mean, in this case, I wouldn't think it would, you know, if it was the case, there had to be habitat that was established. You know, they would have to really look at the surrounding waters too as well, because unless they can stop.
Exactly, and they haven't done any mapping. I mean, they haven't been out here to do mapping at any time recent at all, to even identify what species are where.
So the onus, they're putting the onus on the local entity to come up with a map? Is that what's, if you can clarify that?
At this point, it's not that they're putting the onus on us. We took it upon ourselves to challenge their maps with our own. And then, during the public hearing, their comment was, oh, we welcome that. Please submit that during, as your public comment, so we can review it. And I apologize, saying no, making them sound a little snarky, but that's how it felt during the public hearing.
Yeah, I too sent in the letter, and I didn't receive any, I have to look and see what the response was, but I wasn't told, so I did send a letter January 26th, also asking for an extension. Should they have, I did not receive any notice of that hearing. When was that hearing?
That's because they didn't really publish it anywhere, just like the rule. They, I mean, I don't know who they think reads the federal register. The hearing was on, let's see, the due date was January, or February 26th. The public hearing, I think, was somewhere around January 20th. I can look it up.
Okay, yeah, because I think I sent out a letter. There was a deadline, initial deadline, and then it got extended, I believe.
Yes, it was extended from February to March. They gave us an additional 30 days. And that, that wasn't even because of the letter from the governors. When we asked them about the letter from the governors during the public hearing, they said they couldn't comment, they didn't know if it was received, but it would be unlikely that they could process an extension because the incoming administration had imposed a freeze on all rulemaking. So that meant that there was no rulemaking that was allowed. They also couldn't provide us an extension on the comment period. Although the comment period would come and pass, and the rulemaking was still frozen, by the time they were finished, they would have still been able to impose that final rule. And the only reason that we received the extension was because our awesome coastal zone management office challenged their federal consistency process and told them, you never gave us proper notice. We're counting January 26th as the first date of our notice because that's the first date we received a letter. And that's why they extended to March. They did not do it for any other reason than they messed up the process.
Thank you. So Julian, yeah, I know I had this discussion with your office before regards to, you know, what was the, I guess, the shortcomings in regards to them notifying us? I mean, what was the reason, and how can we go fix that? I guess, fix the communication gap for this type of activity?
I mean, both, both my name and contact and the name and contact of the administrator for GCMP are known, so there really shouldn't be any reason for them to not include us. You know, so I really don't think that that's, I don't really want to speak to their feelings, but, you know, they did have a feeling in communicating with us. And, you know, thankfully, that meant that the process started in January rather than that it was already considered started, you know, months earlier.
So, yeah, is there an opportunity for the public to, you know, like you said, Chelsea, it's very difficult to kind of keep track of these federal notices. Is there a way to kind of publicize this, like bring that information from the federal government to the local community so that we can provide input?
We asked them to do that. They said, well, it's published on NOAA's website. And we asked them for their, in this, with the executive order about climate change, they're seeking information and comments. I mean, here's another just example. They're seeking comments from agencies, NGOs, and fishers and fishing communities about climate change impacts and ways to modify it or ways to, you know, counter climate change. But when we asked them, how are you reaching out to people? Their answer was that they're publishing it on their website, seeking comments. Like, well, who, what fisher do you know goes to read NOAA's comments on the, or NOAA's website? So I asked them about at least crafting social media-ready notices or, you know, putting out ads in local media somewhere, asking for these. So I'm working with one of their people on that. So they were at least open to the idea, but that was for climate change. Other than their website and the federal register, they didn't publish it anywhere. We shared a press release about it, saying that, you know, there's this thing happening. They had their public hearing on January 20th and 21st, and it was dreadful.
Yeah, I think any way that your agencies can assist with that as far as letting the public know, you know, especially important things like this. And, yeah, I'm looking forward to, you know, seeing how they address some of the concerns that were brought up by these agencies. And, yeah, I agree with this resolution that, you know, the public should weigh in on something as important as this. So, yeah, I definitely want to work with the sponsor on this. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the time.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Senator Joanne Brown, thank you for joining us. If you have any questions or comments?
Well, I was just, I'm sorry, I joined a little late. I was just listening to the discussion. I mean, of course, we would love to have critical areas of our coral protected, but it's, it sounds like it hasn't been a clean-cut process from what's been, the information that's been provided. But I did want to ask the Director of Agriculture, you know, it does mention here- But I, I did want to ask the Director of Agriculture, um, you know, it does mention here with regards to the resolution that they're, they're currently, I guess, going through the evaluation to determine if, if the sites that are being proposed by the National Marine Fisheries Service is, uh, you know, desirable? Or do we have other areas around our, our marine, um, community that we're looking at that would be a better designation? So can, can we just get some feedback with regards to what agriculture is currently looking at? Uh, or have you come to that determination? Or is it still in the research, uh, process and review process before, um, you and the respective, uh, experts in this field? I assume you're working with our marine lab also. Um, and what, what is the best location that we can designate? That's in the best interest of our, our community for these resources?
Um, all of the above. Um, first, uh, the question that we're trying to have NOAA even come to a determination about is whether these species are truly even in our waters. Um, that's been the question because the reference that, or the best available science that they're referencing for this was a personal communication from Mr. Dave Burdick at the marine lab. And then in subsequent communications with nymphs, he said that that even his identification for himself was questionable because they all look so similar, like so many different coral species. So we'd like for them really to ideally come out and tell us if these species are even truly here. Um, or at least wait for Dave Burdick's, um, the, the analysis that they're having conducted on some of the species, the genetics. Um, but we are working with UOG, we're working with Dr. Romina King. Um, she has some really great, um, GIS maps of the reefs around the area. Um, in her work with NASA, they just have, I think, Tumon Bay up to PD Bay, but they also have other maps that we're trying to work off. NOAA has older maps that we've also been using. Um, but we're collaborating with the CNMI and some of their GIS people as well, um, to try and get better maps of our areas. Part of, I mean, just when I was reading the proposed rule and I looked at the maps and some of the designations, they're only, they have those two, um, identifying factors for what they consider ideal critical habitat. And the first is that it's a hard substrate and the second is, um, the water quality, that it has to be ideal water quality. So we were using those as just eliminating factors for several areas around the island already. Um, like Talafua Bay, there's no way you can consider that hard substrate or have, you know, um, ideal water quality for the critical, for the ESA species of coral. There's just, there's no way for it to be in those areas. Um, and when we talked to some of our biologists, they said most of our bays are like that where it's not a hard substrate, so it's not even an ideal habitat for the coral species that they're talking about. Sorry.
I know, I understand. I gathered from your comments, we, we don't know how they, how did the, the marine, National Marine Fisheries come to their determination of what they wanted to designate? It didn't sound like we had a, you had a clear cut awareness that you could relate to us and how they came to the areas that they're looking at designating for Guam and the CNMI?
Um, there's, they keep referencing best available science, but when we looked at the, the resources, um, referenced in their information report, must, a lot of it came from DOD researcher reports, um, and communications, some communications with marine lab, which was primarily, um, Mr. Dave Burdick and Dr. Raimondo. But those were, I think, back when they were even looking at listing different species. Um, so that was several years ago. They have no updated research for any of those areas. Um, and the maps that they created, uh, I don't, I think I sent, I'll, I can forward them to you, but I sent them initially, uh, to Senator Raja a while ago. Um, but the maps basically is a map of Guam. DOD areas, um, up north and down south are marked off in red. And then rest of the island is just colored in purple. And the purple is where they would designate critical habitat. So everywhere except DOD.
Interesting. So do you think, uh, from a local perspective, as it relates here, that with it, it would take about five years for us to come to that determination? Or is it something that we could come to sooner from, from our local perspective? And what we think is the most viable area to, to put under such a designation?
We, we, well, we have no choice but to come to that determination sooner. So right now we're working under the May twenty sixth deadline, um, unless they actually, um, extend after their five-year review, which they anticipate having completed in February twenty twenty-two, although they haven't even had us review the draft of that yet either. Um, they thought they did and said they did. And then when we pointed out, no, you didn't, they had to come back and say, okay, you're right, no, we didn't.
And so what recourse would we have if they proceed and they go ahead and designate these locations that they've identified? Uh, do we have any recourse after to pursue it? Or would it have to be through congressional action? Or what recourse would be left to us in our community? If, if indeed the areas that they're identifying are not really viable for us and not really protecting, you know, desired resources? And we come up with an alternate mapping, uh, location of where we think it's the most feasible and beneficial to, to our islands? Uh, what recourse would we have, do you know?
A lawsuit. Um, but we don't want to get to that area yet. We're going to try and work with, um, the governors of each of the islands sending a letter to the Secretary of Commerce and the Secretary of Interior.
Okay, one last question, Mr. Chairman. Do we, we have a general idea yet? What, what, where our alternate location may be for Guam? I know you're saying that's still being reviewed right now. Do, do we have any, any idea? You mentioned there's certain areas, obviously, are bays because of a lot of the sentiment discharge and things that go out in that area. But do we have any other, do we have any idea what we may be proposing as an alternate site yet?
Not yet, ma'am.
Okay, do we have an idea what our timeframe would be for that?
Um, well, I'm hoping to review the maps with our team and see what maps we have already, um, within the next week or so.
Hmm, and then who would, who would make that determination?
I would leave it to the scientists. Um, I'm just there to help.
Was it primary through, would it be primary through marine lab?
Um, it would be a collaborative effort. Um, and we're all, I mean, they, they all work together all the time anyway. So it would just be marine lab, um, but they don't have the maps either. They just have their in-the-body research that Mr. Burdick conducted. And then Romina King has maps that she's already shared with us. So the team are just sort of going over everything. Um, in, in the end though, I mean, it might just be that there really is, what it feels like to me at this moment is that, number one, they don't even know that these corals are already here. Um, number two, this critical habitat designation is more onerous and not really beneficial to our island or community in any real way that we're already jumping through all the federal hoops necessary for permitting processes and, um, section seven reviews that are already being conducted that cover all of this. We're already doing the work ourselves with the marine preserves, with the upcoming Coral Reef Protection Act, um, with permitting. We're doing all of this already. There really is not a need for this. Um, and they can't even tell us that the corals are truly here.
I see. Well, that's a, it's an awful lot this afternoon. I certainly can hear your, hear your frustration, but I appreciate, I appreciate the information. We look forward to getting more as this process evolves. And from the local side, you and the respective, uh, scientists determine what's the most feasible area. Because obviously, I mean, we want to protect what resources we can, but we want to make sure it works for us out here. So thank you very much, the Director of Agriculture. And certainly, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to ask these questions.
Thank you, Senator Brown.
Absolutely. Thank you, Senator Brown, for your questions. Senator Perez, do you have another question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, does anyone know what type of activity, activities will be prohibited? Should this, uh, critical habitat be designated?
That's a great question. And, um, that was another question we posed to them. So they say, sorry, Adrian's telling me I need to calm myself down. But I got so mad about all of this because just the audacity of them. Um, because they're, they frame it under this, we're protecting you from our other federal counterparts. But what? You're also not talking about the fact that we have several millions of dollars in federal money and projects that were funded every day. And you don't mention that that's what's going to be impacted. Um, but they also have no clear idea what threshold they're going to set. So basically, and CNMI did a great job of pointing this out, that it depends on which biologist is sitting in that chair on any given day when your permit comes through, what the threshold of impact or potential impact is going to be. So you, they can't even tell us specifically what activities would be prohibited and what the threshold would be to consider whether there's going to be a potential impact or a serious impact and what, you know, negative impacts. There's no clear line. So we even asked them, can you at least consider consulting with us before you even make those determinations for thresholds? And they don't have an answer for that either. So you could get the, you know, the, turn it down, dial it down. You can get the biologist one day who's, you know, open to working with your state agencies or your private contractors, um, on whatever project to figure out a solution. Or you could get someone in that chair that day who had a really lousy week, is tired of dealing with people from the islands. And, no, he decides that you wanting to put up a buoy is too much of an impact, so you can't do it that day. And he's going to take seven months to review your permit before he even tells you that. So there's no clear thresholds and there's no clear determination of activities.
That seems very highly irregular for a critical habitat designation because usually there's very clear guidelines on what sort of activities can be done. So, um, yeah, the process definitely needs to be questioned, um, first and foremost.
And I promise you, I'm not even exaggerating. We asked these questions of them.
Well, thank you, thank you, and, uh, continue asking those questions. I, uh, really appreciate that.
I'll work on dialing it down.
All right, thank you so much, Chelsea. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Perez. So, um, to Chelsea again, uh, before we wrap this up, I guess, just to reiterate a couple of things. Um, the five-year coral status review and recovery plan, if I'm saying that correctly, that's being conducted by who again? And when is it supposed to be completed by?
By NOAA National Marine Fisheries Services. They anticipate it to be done by February two, oh, can you hear me? They, they anticipated to be done by February two thousand twenty-two.
I'm sorry, and you broke up, who, who is conducting it?
NOAA National Marine Fisheries Services out of Honolulu.
So it's NOAA, uh, NMFS who is conducting this coral status review recovery plan? And they're also the same ones who are proposing the critical habitat be implemented before their own plan is complete, correct?
There, yeah, exactly.
That's another issue I have, it's a little bit, uh, you know, it's a cliche, but cart before the horse.
Yes.
Okay, um, and it sounds like, uh, from the testimony you've provided and the testimony that, uh, Mr. Burdick from the UOG Marine Lab provided is that some of, sort of how they determined that Guam is, all of Guam should be under the critical, most of Guam should be under this critical habitat designation is from some discussions with Burdick and not necessarily any real hard data? Is that correct? Basically, it sounds like Mr. Burdick said, you know, I was diving and I thought I saw these, uh, coral, but we're not sure if it's the right coral, but they look like them, but we saw them a while ago. And then his testimony is, actually, when I went back, I haven't found them anywhere. And they're still proceeding with the critical habitat designation.
Yes, yes.
Now, this critical habitat designation is based on specific, these specific species of coral that, uh, Mr. Burdick, uh, has in his testimony that I read and hopefully did not butcher the names too badly.
Yes.
Um, so it's based on those species, right? And those?
There's the three.
Those three species, right? And, um, so those three species, it sounds like this came about because someone sued them for not protecting those three species? So they're kind of going around, trying to put blanket protection all over the US and its territories and say, we're protecting these species everywhere we think they might be. Including, we think it might be on Guam, so we're just closing off all of Guam. Is that, uh, fair to say, the way I'm sort of simplifying, uh, this whole thing?
In a, in a sense, yes. So Mr. Burdick said, so initially they started off with the list of like fifty different species. Um, Westpac was able to have, help them narrow it down to fifteen. And then I think it was the final twelve that were listed. Seven of them were found in our region, three of them on Guam and CNMI. Um, but the way they concluded that those three were found in Guam and CNMI, like I said, was, or like Mr. Burdick said, was through his personal communications where he does coral mapping and coral, uh, monitoring. Um, that's what he's contracted to do. So when he goes out, he says, hey, I think I saw these species out there. And they're like, okay, so then they, these were already listed species. So they're like, okay, they're on Guam. And then he came back and said, well, I didn't see them again. I'm not completely sure I saw them or that those what they were, but they still went with, those species are on Guam. And then the critical habitat designation is, okay, we need to designate because we got sued. So here, all of your areas, critical habitat.
Okay, um, and, uh, all right. Those are all my questions I have, unless my colleagues have any follow-up questions. If not, um, I'll go ahead and wrap this up. And again, just reiterate that the main purpose of this resolution is just to say, hold off on designating the critical, uh, habitat until you finish your own study that you, five-year coral status review and recovery plan, which should be done in, um, in about a year or so.
Yes.
So we're just asking them to hold off until that plan's done and until we can get some better data to show if indeed those corals are even here before they blanket ev- everything with the critical habitat designation. In addition to that, both the CNMI and American Samoa have similar resolutions because they have similar concerns that we share here on Guam.
Yes.
Okay, so this will conclude our hearing today on this resolution. The committee will continue to accept written statements on today's hearing within ten business days from today, which may be mailed to my office at two three eight Archbishop Flores Street, Suite nine oh six at the DNA Building in Hagatnia. You can also send your statements to us at clyntrell@guamlegislature.org. That's spelled C-L-Y-N-T-R-I-D-G-E-L-L at G-U-A-M-L-E-D-I-S-L-A-T-U-R-E dot O-R-G. Or you can send it by fax to four seven five four seven six eight. Thank you all for your participation. This virtual public hearing is now adjourned. It is three ten PM. Thank you.